You are watching XS La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is June 10th, 2024 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
Welcome, everyone. This is the Town Council meeting, June 10th, 2024, Long Beach. Let's please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of the U.S. United States of America and to the world as one.
Make it a new local call.
Council members, Jayden Davis.
Here.
Shannon Rogers.
Here.
Kenny Farley.
Here.
Joe Schmidt.
Here.
Anita Ronges.
Here.
Chief Swispeck.
Present.
Attorney Wodley.
Present.
Attorney Attorney Lieutenant, I am present. That concludes your role. And I actually, I don't know what Trista has in his, um, doubt if he did, but Trista is tomorrow, um, unless, thanks.
Thank you. I don't have any opening remarks, so I'll entertain a motion for approval of the council minutes.
Motion to approve the council minutes of May 13th, 2024. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Those are approved. Special counsel meeting, May 31st, 2024. We got amended minutes today that had a clarification on it. I don't know if everyone was able to see those.
Yes.
Yep. Motion to approve?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the special counsel meeting minutes from May 31st. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Do we have any public comments, which will be limited to three minutes? Any public comments in the audience? Any public comments on Zoom? Hearing none, we will go to committee reports. Police Department, Police Department, Police Commission, Chief Swispeck.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of May, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 503 calls for service when compared to 354 calls for service in the previous year for an increase of 149 calls. During the month of May, 12 incident reports were documented. A total of six individuals were arrested, three misdemeanor arrests for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated, two misdemeanor arrests for driving with a suspended driver's license, and one misdemeanor arrest for possession of marijuana. Aside from that, there are no major concerns to pass along. I will take a moment to talk about a public service announcement that our staff had brought into a discussion during one of our staff meetings with underage drinking. As with any community, communities often this time of year see underage drinking, but this year in particular, we've seen a significant increase in underage drinking in the Long Beach community to the point that a 14-year-old individual was found walking down Lake Shore Drive while drinking a beer. So that's very concerning for us, and we want to work with the community, with the parents, the guardians, friends and family, to try and educate our juvenile youth of the consequences of underage drinking. So what we've done is we've put a little public service announcement together, we sent it out on a mass email to the town email, and also we posted it to the town's website. So for everybody at attention tonight, with those on Zoom, we just asked, you know, you spread the word to families that you know that have under the age of 21, young adolescents, that hopefully we can get the word out there. Because the last thing we want to do is have to arrest people, we'd rather, you know, get the information out, educate the community, and try and prevent some of these incidents before they occur. In the last couple of weeks, one of our reserve deputies, Deputy Timothy Radke, who had been a reserve deputy in their jobs for 10 years, had to unfortunately step away from our reserve unit, which is a volunteer unit. The individuals, the deputies that serve in the reserve deputy marshal unit do not get compensated by the town of Long Beach. It's totally a volunteer deputy marshal position. They attend the same training that our full-time officers attend annually, and they have to receive a minimum of 24 hours of annual training, and they have to attend a minimum of a 40-hour pre-basics course and have to be certified by the EDM Law Enforcement Academy before they can even assist the town of Long Beach. So I'd like to thank Deputy Marshal Tim Radke for his 10 years of service. He had to step away because of a work commitment. He took on a business of his own and works just too much for him right now, so he left the unit. Therefore, tonight, I would like to also take a moment to introduce, and I'll be at the podium here shortly, to introduce him, our new deputy marshal in our reserve unit, and that's Dylan Hughley. Dylan, fair play's information, is a La Porte County native. He attended the New Prairie High School. In September of 2019, he joined the United States Army, where he serves as a specialist. For the past two years, he has been training on Blackhawks and is training to be a crew chief for Blackhawks in the United States Army. Most recently, he just returned for, from a training session where he was up for how many hours? Quite a few hours ago, he had to be up in the Blackhawks and that. And obviously, he has a military security clearance with the United States Government. He's passed our background requirements. He spent two years previously in the operations side, working with air traffic controllers on the operations of the United States Army. He's certified in CPR, is very knowledgeable with firearms and survival training, and comes from a family that has public service in their background. His father, Rob Hughley, is currently a reserve deputy marshal with us. A little history on Rob, Rob was a deputy marshal, I'm sorry, a reserve police officer back in the Michigan City Police Officer. When I was at the Michigan City Police Department, he was a Michigan City Police Reserve Officer. And now his brother, Dylan's brother, Brandon, who also was a veteran of the United States Army, is also one of our reserve deputies. So Hughley family, see them tonight in the back of the room. I cannot say enough good things about them and what they do for public service in the Long Beach community. They live just outside our community here on U S 12. They own the AGNS Services here in La Porte County. Back on Memorial Day weekend, the family came together, they had approached us and hosted a fundraiser for the town of Long Beach, specifically the police department, and in one single day, through their efforts, raised $10,000 for our marine unit here at the police department. So I'm very grateful for that as well. So thank you, Rob and Angie, for your efforts on that weekend, and to Brandon and everybody else that helped. So with that, I would like Dylan to join me at the podium with Clerk Caplan.
State of Indiana, County of La Porte, Town of Long Beach. I, Mark Swispeck, Chief Marshal of the Town of Long Beach Police Department, County of La Porte, State of Indiana, do hereby constitute and appoint Dylan Hughley of La Porte County, Indiana, to be my reserve deputy marshal within and for the town of Long Beach, and to do and perform any and all duties and acts that may be required of him as a reserve deputy marshal within said town.
Dylan, please raise your hand. I, Dylan Hughley.
Aye, Dylan Hughley.
Do solemnly swear.
Sondly swear.
That I have supported the Constitution of the United States.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I have faithfully.
That I have faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As a reserve deputy marshal.
As a reserve deputy marshal.
Of Long Beach.
Of Long Beach.
La Porte County.
La Porte County.
State of Indiana.
State of Indiana.
To the best of my skill and ability.
To the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chief, you have it.
Well, Dylan, congratulations, and you'll start your training on Monday. Monday to be attending his 40-hour Indiana Law Enforcement Academy pre-basics course. So that will consist of all five days next week. Once he finishes that, this month in June, he'll be going out to the La Porte County Sheriff's Range where he'll qualify in firearms. We'll do some in-house training with him. He'll be spending a minimum of 100 hours of ride-along service with our full-time deputies. And then this Fourth of July, we'll be seeing him quite a bit in town because he'll be working with us during the Fourth of July weekend. And just to give everybody an idea, what the deputy, reserve deputy marshal unit saves the town, well over $10,000 a year at a minimum in overtime from the amount of time that the five reserve deputies that we currently have. So the time then they come out, they're required at a minimum eight hours per month to come out and assist us. But we could not put on the major events in the summer that we do without their assistance. So thank you again, Dylan, for joining us, and then also thank you for your service to the United States and the United States Army as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, the only other update on the police side that I have is that you've noticed the radar sign has been installed on Chastleton Drive. We'll be retrieving information from that periodically throughout the month. Aside from that, I have nothing else unless there's any questions, and there was no police commission meeting last month.
Thank you, Chief, and welcome, Dylan. Town Administrator Chief.
All right, so a couple of updates related to town business. First, I'd like to apologize, our upcoming meeting on July 8th, I will be absent. I will be out of the office for four days that week, but I will be here the entire week of July 4th festivities, but I'll just miss the July 8th meeting. July 4th preparation is underway. Earlier today, Tom Dolph, myself, we spoke to Janice Brown, got a pretty good idea of the needs of the Beech Garden Club as far as prepping for the parks and everything, getting ready for busy summer season. Thank you to all of our volunteers, and Alan's here as well, for all the stories that you guys give to the town. The flags on Chastleton Drive, they were installed that week. Again, a big thank you to Jim O'Roy from the La Porte Forest Store for his donation of the flags and the poles. He's also reached out to me again this year and says that he's willing to donate additional flags in the future for those that are weathered from the seasons being out, and he may also contribute some additional flags that he can put outside the town hall here in Long Oriole as well. Earlier today, the council received an email that we have been notified from NIPSCO that the grant that we applied for energy efficiency for the new public safety building was awarded. We will be receiving $3,759.96 through a grant that we had applied for, so we're very happy about that. That can be used towards the public safety building. I talked about earlier, the marine fundraiser, huge success. Thank you to everybody in the town of Long Beach that either came out or has sent the event, sent in a donation check for that. Very much appreciated, like I said, right, $10,000 currently. There's a home on Chastleton and Flormon. I've been asked several times about the height of the grass at that home. I have reached out to that home where I have yet to get a response.
He cut it.
You did cut it today?
Is there a thorn or something?
Wonderful. Okay. Well, you can kick that off, Jim, and I've left him a few messages.
I know.
Stop 20, the pillar. I had a talk to Woodruff's and the Stop 20 pillar. They are hiring a masonry contractor. I'm just waiting for a date when that work is completed. That pillar was unfortunately struck during the stormwater improvement project on Lake Shore Drive, and therefore the contractor's responsible for the repairs, and they assured that they are working on that. And that's all I have on the town side.
Thank you. Volunteer Fire Department, tell you, Dave?
This is a report of our activity, excuse me, through May 31st. On fire call side, we stand at 31 calls here to date. That's in comparison to 18 of the year before for last year. That's a 72% increase. In the month of May, we had one fire call. We had a hazardous condition, two false alarms, two watercraft rescues, and standby for weather conditions. Every turnout per call stands at seven, but I'll highlight, we had, in one of the fire calls, was a medico aid, automatic medico aid response with Michiana for the Dune Beach Hotel. And at that call, we had 18 members, so our seven is just for the various calls we have, but when we need people, we get people, so that's a good thing. On the medical side, we stand at 33 calls here to date versus 42. We had three personal injuries for the month, a sick person and a lymphocyst. And our average turnout of members per each call stands at five. Our response time for fire and medical is very close, four and a half minutes, and members have donated 1,218 hours here to date. I thought you were going to say something about the PSB dedication.
I was going to do that.
Okay.
I was going to do that, but you can.
No, please. No. I haven't got to do it, but it was, it was a great event, and just leading up to that event, a lot of people put blood, sweat, tears into the complex to get it ready to meet his expectations, because you're perfection. Host test, we're doing that tonight just for information. We're using the parking area over the maintenance center, and I just did a rough calculation. We're doing about, testing about a half mile of folks, so we pull it off the truck, we charge it under pressure, and we did see one that sort of had a problem, so we took it out of service. And Mark, I don't know if this would be, I just thought, I don't know if the council would be willing to send a letter to the Coast Guard to talk about, well, my displeasure, you know, of not having coverage here in only 40 hours a week and every other weekend. I mean, other than, we have probably the greatest Mount Beach out on Lakefront. We probably have more than Michigan City possibly. And what it is, we, we had a call recently, and I was on the shore, and this gentleman was out on a sailboat, and it was rough, windy, and he was having difficulties. And he got close to the shore, but still far away. And the protocol usually is when, especially for a drowning, but the 911 center dispatches the Coast Guard. In this case, they didn't because it was just a boat in trouble. I asked for the Coast Guard, and long story short, a boat from St. Joe, Michigan, was underway to come to us. In, in perfect conditions, maybe that's an hour of, of travel time, because no one's manning the Michigan City Coast Guard. Now, our fallback for the busy season probably would be the DNR and the Long Beach boat when they're, but I would, I would like to see this town send a letter to the Coast Guard, just expressing our opinion, whether it's for or against, but my opinion, my 69 years on this earth, we've always had a full, fully staffed Coast Guard station, and considering the amount of bullets we have, I just think they're cutting the budgets in some wrong areas. Zach concludes my report. I don't think there was a police or fire commission meeting, right?
Right. I have a quick question here. How long has, have they not had, been manning the Coast Guard?
Started, the news broke in like February, I think, saying that this was going to happen.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll tell you, I mean, I, I was upset enough that I could have said, no, we don't need the Coast Guard to come down here. But I thought, you know, I, I would do that, then something would happen. So they were underway. I don't know how far they got, but still, they never reached us in time. But for drownings, for boating issues, but even drownings, they used to be able to meet the Coast Guard Station Michigan City with their fast boat, be probably off our beach or wherever, within, within eight minutes. Because it was manned, it was fast boat. And now it's, we're sort of left, like, what are we supposed to do? And so.
So we've, we've been in communication with them pretty closely to figure out their coverage for the summer. Now, this is an example, for the Fourth of July weekend, our boat will be out immediately following the Long Beach parade. So we'll be underway out in the water probably by 11:00 a.m. on the Fourth of July, all throughout the weekend. We probably will stay out until 5:00, 6:00 p.m., something like that. The United States Coast Guard Michigan City Station is going to be working that weekend because they're targeting like special weekends and busy weekends. To me personally, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but their hours are going to be 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. I would rather see them like a 10:00 a.m. to, you know, 8:00 p.m. type thing, because that's when we're going to have the most people in the water, and we're not going to people out swimming 9:00, 10:00 by night. So we're trying to work, they have a change in administration there. Their previous chief has now went to Vulcan. He's being stationed, restationed out to Texas. I have not yet met with the new chief there. He just came there a few weeks ago, so I hope to meet him in the next week or two and have some discussions, because I know the Michigan City Police Chief, the sheriff, all of us have the same concerns. In fact, this past Friday, I was with the Porter County Sheriff, Jeff Bellin, and Jeff Bellin shares the same concerns for Porter County as well, because it attracts the Porter County beaches also. So, so they're going to have a minimum footprint. It's a 40-hour work week. Their hours are ranging, they're various hours. They promise to keep us updated when they will be out. Definitely, and it's probably a good idea, once I can find out who we should send a letter to, maybe, you know, Joey, I'll get the information to you, we send like a letter of support asking for, you know, more hours.
Because I think it's wonderful that with Matt Discrow heading up the, the police unit, I think that's great, but my bet is the time that there's going to be a need, it's going to be when there are six to 10-foot waves out there, when we just boat would be, I don't think even the DNR, and we get a call for a drowning. It's, it's gut-wrenching, and I just, it really upsets me that that decision was made, and maybe if we have a few folks right, maybe we can impact.
They've been very helpful. I mean, like, the Fourth of July weekend, our boat will be stationed at the Coast Guard Station. Typically, we leave it in the dry dock at 7th Michigan Boulevard, and then we have to either call to have the boat deploy, or we go there and drop it at the water force right away. For the busy weekends, the Coast Guard has agreed that they're going to allow us to take over their slip at the Coast Guard Station, so our boat will be in the water several days at a time. We'll probably drop it on Friday morning, and they keep it there through like Sunday night or Monday. So they are working with us, but definitely their presence will be minimal.
That's, that's huge, what I've said, because we're down at six feet, you know, you have the railroad bridge you have to contend with, which could be closed, and just getting out to the lake from where the Long Beach boat is, I don't know how many minutes that is, but if the railroad bridge is closed, you're out of luck.
And Harvard Master, Michigan City Harvard Master, Tim Crane and I had a conversation a few weeks ago, and Tim's willing to help us as well, find a placement in the marina in Michigan City for our boat as well, at no cost to the town, because he understands the significance of us having enough emergency responders available to help the lakefront emergencies, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dylan. Public Works, Kendra.
What's that? Public Works.
Public Works did not meet in May. The last meeting was April 22nd. The next meeting's June 24th. I can talk a bit about Stop 18, or Mark, do you already have that covered in the report? Okay. So Stop 18 is getting a rehab, and we have had some erosion still with the water runoff, kind of the, the stormwater project, still was causing some erosion, and the stairs were, were coming apart there, or getting a little unsafe, and sand, sand, you know, being redistributed unevenly, so it needed some attention. So we had a special meeting, that was the May 31st Special Town Council meeting with Haas and Woodruff to come up with some plans. Woodruff and Haas did that, so they've already started. I think it's a seven to 10-day project. I went down there, looked at it just before this, and have been following along with everything. Should work out great. There's going to be a viewing, we're able to add a viewing platform now with some benches. The stairs of boardwalk's going to be redirected a little bit to the east, and we're going to add a handrail to help people get down from this platform, and then eventually, most likely, add some metal stairs, but we're going to wait to see how it plays out this year and what the winter holds, and, and actually be able to view it first before we go ahead and do the metal stairs, because that's kind of quite an undertaking. So that's going on right now, and they're also addressing the erosion with some fabric and some different grip wrap and boulders to help redirect the water. So we think we found a solution there, so that's what's going on at 18. Do you want anything else, Mark, on that? Did I miss anything? I'm sorry.
Thank you. Park Board, Kendra.
Park Board Summer Campus has started soon, June 17th to August 2nd are those dates, and they're still looking for two counselors, I believe, so anyone who wants to be a counselor, reach out to the Town Hall. It's actually Sarah Kuster, but we can direct you there. Moving in the Park's going to be July 3rd, as it always is, the night of the Fire Department Ice Cream Social. Art in the Park is July 27th. And the only other two things, kind of, the tennis courts are going to be resurfaced. I don't think they have a date for that yet. And eventually, the, the, the long-term plan within, it's quite an undertaking, but totally, totally redo the tennis courts and possibly, and hopefully add another pickleball court there, kind of re-figure how that's laid out. So that'll be great, but in the meantime, right now, they will be resurfaced where the cracks filled in and repainted for the season. And then we have some trees being removed that were on town property at Stop 29, so Zach and, and Mark and Chris and I would send a letter to the homeowner there, and I think that's progressing along fine, and so those trees, we're going to be able to move them and take advantage of them and use them as a screen, I think, in the public safety building and the parking lot, but either way, that area at Stop 29, the, the town property will be back, you know, for those trees will be removed from there. And that's it.
Thank you. Community Center, Anita.
The Community Center met June 3rd, and the discussion was primarily about the heat pumps and a review of the heat pumps, and that will be coming up on our agenda later in the meeting.
Can I add something to that real quick? It's on topic. Just, I'm trying to start a group of any residents interested in hoping to do some fundraising for the Long Beach Community Center, so just casual right now, if anybody out there in the, in the audience is listening, just give us a shout out or let me know, and I can tell you some of what we're trying to plan, some thoughts that I have. So anybody interested in that, just reach out to the council, please.
Thank you. Budget and finance, Meg?
Yes, budget and finance, Meg, on June 5th, and we went over cash investment strategy. That was explained in our last CD, which is by 100,000, which are in the pool, which is very smooth, and I'm going to work on reinvesting some of that cash right away. Our accountant, Tristan, and I are going to stay in the investment pool to see if that would be an option for Long Beach, as well as the T-bill process, which has a little higher upper turbulence, and I just need to look into it and see if it makes more sense. Currently, we do. Currently, we do our CD investments for the rising rates of things, so, but still going to explore these other options. There is support for the last couple of months for a transfer into the rainy day one. And the final bills for these larger projects are CD for the Boulevard into this transfer. I know even that, what we have to work with. We mainly discuss the budget process in the calendar because it's a group that works with department heads. So we discuss deadlines and community plans for preparing the representation that we bring to council, which is approved at State Laurel. Workshop with department heads will be held June 25th from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. And Chief Mary Henley informed the department heads. And that's going to kind of get us started.
I think the other thing, oh, sorry, Meg.
No, what?
The other thing that we discussed was the process of how checks are written, actually how invoices are cleared. And how, once an invoice comes in, we discuss the whole process from beginning to end, how it comes in, how it's coded, who reviews it, when it's reviewed, how it's reviewed. And that was helpful to hear. There are many eyes on what happens. And nothing is mailed until things are approved by the council, who approves everything and gets the directories. So that was helpful. Thank you.
And Trista is better at explaining to us than me. And she can give a better explanation to anybody that needs it. Filing meeting and private council meeting, monthly financials are distributed to the council and department heads, including the commitment to cash investment, detailed rooms and expenditures, funding projections, and the capital plan. We did most work on the capital plan. It's in a good place. We kind of added some columns that help show the cash flow. Because with this accounting, the timing is important for when tax levies are received versus when we can spend them. And certain funds receive cash at different times. So speaking of the June tax levy that was received and distributed to the funds that were allocated in 2024 budget. So that's always good news. The next budget and finance meeting is scheduled for July, oh, the next budget. The finance meeting is scheduled for July 3rd. It's going to be moved to July 17th at 11:00 a.m. due to Calhoun. And also, we're meeting June 26th for the workshop. And then probably another workshop will be scheduled in July sometime about the 1st of June. Thanks. Any questions?
Thank you. Human Resources, J.D.
We met on May 15th. Our next meeting is June 17th. I was on the agenda. Still remain working with the handbook, compensation recommendations for the budget process for managing the town clerk, and then for the promotions of members of the police force.
Thank you. Tree Board, Ellen.
Ellen Lynch, Chairman of the Tree Board. We met this Wednesday. Everybody was present. It was a short meeting. The first thing was that we voted on is changing our meetings from monthly to quarterly. Since our ordinance is done, there's really no reason to meet. And a lot of it is at, you know, when we get things that are thrown at us and, you know, we weigh in, so to speak. The other thing that we talked about was a section of the ordinance that talks about tree vegetation clearances. I've had several people come up to me, I don't know, I guess I'm the tree lady now. And they know who I am. But there's a lot of concern for some of the sightlines on corners and streets in our area. There, I actually experienced it. I was walking my dog down Foxdale, turning onto Hazelteen. And, you know, that's a hill, and I come over that hill. And again, I was like, oh my God. And I pulled my dog back and it was like, I could not see that that car was coming. So I have some pictures here. So I just kind of wanted to run through exactly what our, this part of the ordinance covers. And I have copies for you, so you can read it in your locker. But basically, what it says is that overhanging trees should not obstruct the light from the streetlight or intersection sign. The town has the right to prune any tree or shrub on private property when it interferes with the proper spread of light, of streetlight, obstructs free passage of pedestrians, bicyclists, or vehicles. Corner intersections need to have a clear vision of sight triangle. And that is exactly 15 feet by 15 feet by 15 feet at the corner. And anything in that minor vision at a corner of an intersection should be no more than 24 inches high. We did a lot of research on a lot of this stuff. So it's pretty much standard in the state of Indiana and other counties that we look at their tree things. Another thing too, and any tree that's in that sightline needs to have no limbs up at least eight feet from the ground up. So people coming to those intersections can see where they're going. And I don't think I need to say anymore. We all know that's not true here. I'm just throwing it out there, people, that this is in there. And I'm scared, especially on the main streets that go to the stops. In the summer, there's wagons. And now that they're all on those little scooter things and beep-bopping around and they got little engines on them. And then, don't get me on the golf carts for 14 and 15-year-olds. Last weekend, it was nuts. But, so there's a lot of traffic and people aren't paying attention. And I'm so scared a little kid or someone that gets away from a monosport, they'll get hurt. So when they're coming down, up and down those streets. And Hazelteen, it's scary because of that hill. You go up a hill before you level off to go the rest of the way down the street. So that's what we wrote. I have copies of it. And I actually have some pictures here of some of the, I can just pass them out, of some of the sightlines. This is Hazelteen at Oakwell. This is Hazelteen, no, it's not, it's Foxdale. All right. There's some other ones. We had Janice took one out of her car so we could have a car view. This is good quality paper, too. It's good size. Beach path, and I just got stuck over. And you can even see here along, you know, beyond this thing here, all this is coming out. And there's sections on Fairway that cars actually have to go around the bush to go down the street. So these are just examples, you know. I just, I'm throwing it out there as a concern in hopes that, you know, you need any more help with that or you want us to do it in the tour of all the intersections, that would be great. This is the part of the ordinance I was talking about. And on the back, I have some garden exhibits about these. You may just pass them around. Okay. I trimmed it before, right. So my, talking to Janice, who's like, you know, the yang to the yang here, we decided just to only throw on a couple. We didn't want to give you the whole, the whole city of Long Beach problem. So, but this is the section that we're talking about. And just, you know, if something were to happen to someone and there was an accident, we have an ordinance stating that we're going to be doing this. And I'm worried to have a ball, you know, someone being hurt. So I just, it is a concern. And I have a couple.
Get back to your microphone so we can hear you.
Okay. So that's all. That's all I wanted to do is to bring this up and bring it to your attention. And if you want us to make an inventory of the most, you know, like, top 25, the top 10, top 5, you know. Maybe some of this stuff that can be done internally, you know, Tom can cut some stuff back, I don't know. All I know is that the community's getting older and this stuff has been building and going on. It's just, we need to do something, or try to do something. So, that's it. Any questions?
I have a question. Have any of the homeowners been approached to manage it or take care of it?
The tree, we just do town property. I mean, we could, I mean, we could, we could definitely come up with something. I mean, Janice and I have talked about it. How about we write something and send it out? Help, you know. Some of the things are getting too bad. If they have a grant, they can go out and cut it, you know, that it's too low. You know, we're worried about the people, the community, especially during this summer season. And, you know, that is definitely something we could do, just come up with one of those emails.
We could also ask residents to report, whether it's their home property and they need help or if they think it's in front of their house, but it's on town property, that's their duty to.
Yeah, usually those intersections are town property.
I think it would prompt myself as a resident. I have two years to be returned.
All right. We will do that.
So.
Shout out emails or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay.
I kind of like the idea of an inventory, like maybe giving us the top five most dangerous at a time, so it's not so overwhelming.
Yeah. We can, yeah, we can do that. And then I'm sure Tom wouldn't want to say something about that. And Chief, you know, because he has, and he probably has a lot that he knows of that he would say are probably more problematic. But I'm just, I was like focusing on those streets that go down to the stops and popular stops, 22, 23, you know, some of those are pretty busy. The other ones that are, they're winding streets, which doesn't seem to be as busy for some reason. But the email thing, we can definitely do, we can do that right away.
Joy, I can give you the example of last year, for instance, at the northeast corner of Hazelton and Oakwell. Or I'm sorry, Foxdale.
Yeah, in this box.
Yeah, Foxdale. So Tom and Brent went in there last year. Because we could be doing some of these intersections we have with some of the homeowners. So last year, Tom went in on the right way and we trimmed that back. And it does need to be trimmed again this year. I'll meet with Tom tomorrow and discuss that. Mount Player in Oriole last year, we reached out to the homeowner there near the stop sign. Very much cooperative with us. They have Dan's Landscoring that takes care of the landscaping. We beat the guys who trimmed them within probably 48 hours. We're reaching out to them. There have been a few that we've dealt with in the past, not as cooperative, that we're probably going to have to land off, actually, you know, probably sending them a letter, I will, and telling them that we're going to come in and, you know, remove what's on the right way and that. But I do like the idea, send us maybe the top five or six.
Okay.
And then I will work with our street department to see what we can do in some of those areas to make progress. And work with the residents to seek cooperation.
So, and you can still send out an email to them, ask them, make it effie like, help us. How about the oak wilt email? What? How about the oak wilt email? She's not here. She's a perfectionist. It's almost, you know, being gone through that forever, it's like the disease. You know, it's where the oak wilt is aware, kind of, and it's like, oh. But the more you read, the more you're scared. And we saw all the other trees that were cut down because they had all kinds of stuff. Oak wilt has that tendency. And when it passes to other oak trees, it doesn't care what kind of oak tree. It'll go to black oak, it'll go to white oak, it'll go to any of those. And it always, you know, so, but, you know, she, you know, she's getting. Okay.
Maybe you can include it in the email.
And Jan, if you're listening, this is the second time she's asked.
Ellen, I have a quick question. Since you're going to quarterly meetings, when, do you have the date when the next meeting will be? Or I'll get the email.
October, yeah. I wrote it down. I forgot to bring it. I'll send you the email.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Building Commission will be meeting this Friday at 1:00. And the Board of Zoning Appeals will be meeting this Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. for a public hearing for, I believe it's 15, 14 Lake Shore Drive. Is that correct, Meg?
That sounds right for the brands.
That's what it is. I'm pretty sure that's it.
15, 14 Lake Shore?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. APC, Anita.
Advisory Plan Commission met on May 20th. And we will continue to review the comprehensive plan review of 2016. It was approved late November of 2016. Just kind of deciding how we'll go about that, discussing some of the issues with our town attorney. And we will meet again on June 17th.
Thank you. Building Revenue Report, Meg.
On May 24th, there are 36 permits issued, totaling 364,000. Of course, there's a big sale cap, total revenue of 3,407,000. There are several other permits issued, totaling 938,000. Seven streetcar permits, revenue of $700,000. Nevo expenses paid to Rashia Nelson James were $5,275,000. Accountant Charis paid and made to spend their company $6,933,000, 51 cents. And the latest, the 400,000, saved space $6,230,000. Could I please, I would ask for a motion to approve these expenses?
I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public Safety Building Progress Update, Chief.
Last week on Wednesday, June 5th, the town hosted the open house for the new public safety building. It was a success, well-attended. I would estimate well over 300, some participants came through the building, got to enjoy attending the fellowship and walk around the facility. A huge thank you to Rick Whitfield, Light and Light Catering, 100% donation to the town, did not charge us a single dime for the catering services, the staff, amount of food and beverages and hors d'oeuvres that she had supplied to the open house was very, very much appreciated. To include, Mrs. Scartosi, from Scartosi's here locally. She attended the event. Her son Joe also worked the event, brought food. Actually saw her getting ready to run out of food, went back, got more food. And again, 100% donation to the town. Just incredible to see Long Beach residents coming together. Everybody had a great time. It was a huge success. I want to take a moment to talk about them leading up to that event, how it was a very good team-building experience for both the police and the fire department. I got to watch our deputy marshal, Anthony Farley, as he was, you know, mopping the entire facility. And right behind him, Dave Elbers. You know, Dave Elbers, he's been with the Fire Department probably 44 years, somewhere in there, right, Dave? How many?
40.
Forty. Forty years volunteering to this community. And I cannot say enough good things about David Elbers. That man was there every day from the crack of dawn to the evening, washing windows, vacuuming, putting up shelving, hanging pictures. Just the amount of things that he did in detail. He talks about, I'm a perfectionist, he's just as much a perfectionist. Because we were going, moving photos and straightening them up prior to the event. So a huge thank you to Dave Elbers and the entire team at the Long Beach Fire Department. Everybody came together from the time of the initial setup, before the cagers got there. And then when the event was over, I would say it probably, what, 30-minute stage? We had that place broken down, all the tables and chairs were put up. And to the towns team as well. Everybody from, you know, Tom and Brent and all of our staff pulled together to make it a very successful event. And again, even this week already, I'm still receiving compliments from members of the town just saying, thank you for a wonderful evening of fellowship. And it's a great start to the SAR. The residents just thoroughly enjoyed coming together, visiting one another. And even some of the naysayers of the project itself were there in support of the project. So it was nice to see people finally, you know, coming together to support the emergency responders here in Long Beach. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we were all introduced to tiny little ice cream cones filled with mac and cheese. And they were wonderful.
I need the recipe as well.
Okay. MS4 Ordinance, Ordinance Number 2024-05, second reading. You don't have to read the whole thing, right?
No. Take action on it.
Let's read them. Let's read them.
We've got a few hours, we could read it all, but I would make a motion to approve this on second reading. Do we have a second for discussion?
I would second the motion to approve on second reading.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Lake Shore Mechanical Proposal, it shouldn't have been for $47,500. We got a new proposal today, and I apologize because it just came out today. Anita and I and the chief have been involved in the ongoing conversation, so we're comfortable with it, but I know Kendra and JD and Shannon, you guys just gappled today, so if you'd like to look this over.
I saw it.
You want to vote on it?
I saw it on the email, so I'm good.
Okay.
You want me to use it?
Joy, if I could just add the heat pump that we're requesting from Lake Shore Mechanical is for $15,212. That same manufactured heat pump, which is a Ventons or the manufactured water furnace, I actually went out and saw a second quote on that same identical product, just to make sure that pricing was in line. And that price came in at $15,950. So about 700, roughly, yeah, 730 some dollars more. So, Lake Shore is actually the lower quote of the two that we received. The specific heat pump will go into the Y MCA, where there are three heat pumps within that facility. Currently, the heat pump that is out of this will be replacing that pump. The other two are working. Pricing on this, Anita and I said for about an hour and a half long presentation a week ago, the various heat pumps that the committee had looked at were from the basic heat pump, which was not a variable speed, we can purchase at $7,630. It would take 10 to 12 weeks to get. Middle-of-the-line heat pump is about $9,220. And then the high-efficiency heat pump is $15,212. And the reason I asked for the high-efficiency heat pump in this particular area is it runs much quieter than the other models, given the fact that the Y MCA is our premier renter in, or at least in the community center. They wanted to have a heat pump that not only is very quiet, but is also energy-efficient because of the output in that room, it beats the bulk of energy out of all the other rooms in the community center. So just a little bit of background, council as well, I can answer any questions if you may.
So I just, for clarification, we're going from three high-efficiency to one three-ton.
Correct. We're going to, we're not going to go out the other, we're just going to replace three units, we're only going to replace one unit at this time. This will be a trial basis, we can try this high-efficiency one.
Okay.
I will say, and I discussed this with the committee at length, in the hallways, my recommendation moving forward is if a heat pump was to go out in the hallway, we're probably not going to put the high-efficiency one out in one of the major hallways, because I'm not worried about keeping the main hallways quiet. But in the Y MCA, in the gym at the community center, I think it is very important that we get an efficient unit, you know, who's safe, probably several hundreds of dollars a year over the time of how paid for the cost of the difference of the two. But yeah, right down the line, replacing one heat pump is a why.
I also want to just mention at that meeting that Doug Wixstrom was on the community center committee, was invaluable when we were going through the issues with the water tower, the cooling tower. And when they were asked to come up with additional quotes, he, he did a wonderful job of really laying out for vendors and trying to compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges. So, kudos and thanks to Doug. He, he did a nice job of making this easy to come up with, the decision, especially for the why, to come up with using the one that will, will work best there, and then deciding how it moved forward.
And this purchase would be part of the capital expenditure plan for the community center. They were, I think awarded $140,000 this year for capital expenditure. However, we're going to be cutting that back, I believe, probably to 70,000 or 80,000. And to date, they have not spent any large dollars on their capital expenditure plan, so this $15,212 will be part of their capital outlay plan for 2024.
Just as a note, we've got 23 of these in the building that will ultimately need to be replaced. So Joe and Doug actually met with an energy company today, an energy efficiency company that they were directed to from NSCO. And they're looking at a plan with maybe some kind of energy rebates to, you know, look at everything at the same time. And like the chief said, probably not put this really expensive one in all the places, like not in the hallways and wouldn't be needed in, you know, the historic room and places like that that have heat pumps, don't need that big of one. But I think these guys are going to give us a whole plan moving forward, something to look at. So at this time, I would make a motion to approve this Lake Shore capital invoice for heat pump for $15,212.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Discussion seeking authorization to purchase $140,000 F-550 truck for Public Works Lintco Equipment Sales.
At our meeting, we have presented a proposal for the street department, actually our Public Works team, to purchase a 2024 F-550 truck, which will serve multi-purposes for the Public Works team, primarily, it will assist in winter months for snowmobbing towns roadways. We are a member of Sourcewell, which is a contract vendor that goes out and seeks the most competitive price. I sent everyone a quote that we received back on May 24th from Lintco, which is the equipment sales vendor that we utilize in Marisville and the area. They went out through our Sourcewell membership, and at the front of the quote, we'll see our member number and information on the terms of the quote. They were able to get us a quote for the truck at $71,668. And then for the snowplow, the salt box, the aluminum bed, all the lighting, installation, everything to put this truck into service for an additional $67,220, for a total of $138,000, I'm sorry, $138,888 would be the cost of this. They have the chassis in stock currently, however, they would have to order the additional components to put this plow and salt box together for us. They have given us a timeframe of mill graders in 200 days to put this together. We've been kind of assured that they will hopefully have this to us by this fall for our plowing season. As discussed at our last meeting with our financial consultant, Trista Hudson from Center Dalton, they advised that we have significant funds in the garbage and leaf fund, and that that particular fund would be utilized to cover this expenditure for the $138,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may come up with.
Anybody have any questions? I'd make a motion to approve. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New Business Resolution Number 2024-002, move monies within funds.
Yes, so we've filed a council's resolution to transfer some current devoted from an area where we do not need it as much, and the budget can be entered in case it is needed. So we're not getting much of this, available as a way to use it in this area. So when you move between line item numbers through the series, you've got to have involved, it's not within the same series. So this request, yeah, entertaining, across government events, and both of these transfers are of that same nature. So first, it's moving some wages into capital, that is approved in the capital that's already spent. The second transfer is from a 400 account line, line to a 300 line. This cash is appropriated in May, a council approved. And unfortunately, this just needs to be transferred, this is a good one, you know, appropriated for, giving information in all of the 400 capital line, but this amount of it, $19,000, was appropriated to return that last expense. Any other questions on either of these transfers from council?
Not seeing any, I'd make a motion to approve the Resolution 2024-002.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. K Plus IT Contract, Chief?
For the past two years, we've utilized the services of K Plus Technology Solutions for information technology needs for the town. We are very pleased with the services that we receive from Jack Capeless and his staff. They are very responsive, they have a help desk that's a 24/7 operation and turnaround time requests have been very, very significant and pleasing to all of our staff. The contract, however, is significantly increasing due to the fact that the needs of the town have increased, and therefore, the vendor, K Plus, has increased the contract from the previous $950 a month to $1,500 a month, is the new contract that is before you tonight. I know Kendra and I were having, Paul had actually taken a look at this for us as well. I know it's a significant increase, but I can say that yes, in fact, we have utilized them much more in the past year than we had previously, two years before that. So with that, we're open for any questions, concerns regarding the contract. Obviously, the increase, once the contracts are approved, if approved, with that, I would anticipate start the very next month.
I think that it was very helpful that Jack sent that email that was forwarded to all of us, that talked about the need to raise the support fees and how they build relationships first, knowing that it is going to be putting in a lot of extra time to get it sorted out. And I also appreciate that he attached the printout from the ticket system that shows the time that's worked and, and that he feels that it's a good medium range, it kind of sounded like in his email, to continue doing the work for the town.
I think Paul had a good suggestion, he thought, yes, we should move forward with this. Thank you for the IT expertise, Paul. But suggested that maybe we put together a group of IT residents, people that have experience in that, to maybe start looking at other, you know, quotes and things like that, to make sure we're getting everything we need. I think that's a good idea. I think chief said we had an IT committee, right? And they kind of fell apart. I don't know anyone except Paul that's good at IT, but.
That's our committee.
Yeah, I would be up for it. But for this one, I would say for this year, I would make a motion that we approve this IT Support Services Agreement for $1,500 from K Plus.
So is it an annual contract, or is it a month-to-month contract?
I think it's an annual contract, but it's a month-to-month fee. Is that correct?
The client may terminate this agreement at any time and for any reason. In the event that this agreement is terminated, K Plus further promises to work with any new IT service provider on a subsequent transition, submit full and up-to-date documentation related to all of the IT systems.
I guess it's month-to-month.
Yeah, that's in the last year, I kept. I'm reading.
There is a date term that's listed, so it's open ended to council.
Okay.
And I will say to Anita's point earlier, that when we initially, the previous IT committee had sat down with Jack and his team, and they had proposed engaging the town, their services and that, that they did come in with a very low number, they were very responsive, and they probably didn't lose out for the first year with that contract because of the amount of work, just to get us to the point where now, anything from a PC issue, an email issue, you know, K Plus is our go-to. So it's, it's been very easy working with them.
We have a motion, right, and a second?
I don't think we have a motion.
Well, we make a motion.
Second.
To accept this contract for $1,500 per K Plus.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
Just if Paul wants to take on the IT committee.
We've got one.
You could talk to chief. See what people you can find.
For me, as a person who manages IT profession, as a part of my career, I find it simple to be short, and anytime we see a percent increase on an annual contract, it should be going up to bid. So I cannot support this contract in its form.
Wait, what did it should, what did you say at the end? It should be going up, or it shouldn't be going up? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
It should go up to competitive bid. Anytime we're seeing a percent increase of this high from $900 a month to $1,500 a month, I think we should be going out and seeing what the market proves to see if we're getting a good deal.
And with our IT committee, hopefully we will be able to do that, and we can back out of the contract, it looks like, at any time. I'm sorry, terminate the contract, back out was the wrong language.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, with passes for the fourth one. Septic Sprinkler System Restrictions, that is on here because we have an ordinance that says septics and sprinkler systems cannot be put in the setbacks. We thought that was kind of absurd for sprinkler systems, because they're all in the setbacks, practically on the property line. So we initially wanted to send this to the APC to review it. And from then, we found out from Chris, there's an Indiana code that as of June 30th, 2023, a county, city, or town ordinance may not adopt requirements, restrictions, or conditions concerning the design, construction, installation, location, maintenance, operation, or inspection of a septic system before a sale of a residential on-site sewage system that are more stringent than the requirements, restrictions, and conditions of the rule of the State Department concerning residential on-site sewage systems. So as of last June 2023, someone could have their septic five feet from their property line, that's the state rule. When they get to the beach, they also add in, it's got to be, I believe, 50 feet from the water. But we can't make anything more restrictive, so we're going to have to change our ordinances. And I, Chris, you did say there's a way to appeal it, but.
Yes, they can appeal through any permits that get issued through the health department, but this issue is being taken up by the APC, we're sending them back for you to change the sprinklers and then make sure that the ordinance is reconciled with the state code.
Okay. Okay. So we'll let this then go through the APC and let them send us back a recommendation.
Yeah, the reason is because it's part of the zoning code, so there's the process. Unfortunately, it's pretty... The process is much more involved. The natural change is pretty easy.
Yeah, okay. Cleaning service for a public safety building. Chief?
The fire department through the fire commission meeting, Shannon was part of the discussion and I appreciate Shannon, your assistance in getting cleaning solutions. We coordinated with them, had them come out, take it with the public safety building, adding that facility to the bi-weekly... Oh, I'm sorry, bi-monthly cleaning that they would be conducting as they do here at the town hall. Right now, every Friday, Cleaning Solutions comes in and cleans the town hall. And the cost of that is $210 per cleaning. We've received an estimate from Cleaning Solutions so that on the same day, the Friday that they come here, they would then also clean the new public safety building. And they outlined and shared with the council the amount of work that they would be doing, scope work, for a fee of $240. In speaking to members of the fire department's administrative team, Blake Applegate responded back to me and notified us that the fire department would be willing to cover the cost of one of the cleanings for $240. And then the town would be responsible each month for $240 to have the building cleaned. So they would share that responsibility and cost with the town. So the proposal before you for Cleaning Solutions is for the cleaning of a new facility at the sum of $240 per session. And with the understanding that the fire department would be billed for one of the cleanings and then the town will receive the billing for the second that month.
So is it $480 per month then? It's bi-weekly, but...
Yes, $480.
Okay.
And currently, we pay $420 a month for the town hall.
I'd make a motion to approve. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? Thank you. Hail damage to the community center insurance claim. Chief?
For the information of the public, after the May 7th unfortunate hailstorm, we went ahead and had all the town facilities checked for any potential hail damage. That included the town hall, the community center, and the public works building. And during that evaluation, it was discovered that the community center had received significant hail damage. Since that initial finding, I filed a claim with Michigan Insurance through Melissa McKnight, which is our policy holder for the town's liability insurance. The insurance company then sent out one of their adjusters who met with an adjuster from a local contractor here in the Moore County. They then had put together an estimate just for the sake of potentially getting another estimate in the future. I'm not going to share the total amount, but the council is aware what the amount is. It's well over $100,000 to replace the roof of the community center to include the gutters as well. We have a $1,000 deductible in our policy. I'm waiting for additional information from our insurance company on what the next steps are. But I wanted to share with the council and keep this on our agenda due to the significant cost of this repair that could keep everybody updated each month. Shannon, you had a great question. I've reached out to the insurance company this morning to ask what the impact would be to the future premiums for the town since this would be a significant insurance claim. And Michigan Insurance indicated that they have sent it off to the underwriters and I would hope to hear back in a week or so of any potential impact to our premiums in the future. So for now, it's just information sharing. The only facility, again, is the community center. It's the only building that sustained hail damage. Not only was it to the roof, but also the copper structures that we have over there, our gutters were damaged as well. And I'll keep everybody updated as I continue to receive information. Any questions?
Just a comment. I think that probably during the budgeting process, we may usually take into account increases. So it may be something to keep in mind. Just in the event that there is an increase, we can certainly keep that in mind for insurance.
Any more questions? Long-term rentals, bunkhouses. This is actually on here just for discussion. Kendra, you want to leave this? I know we had one issue with a resident, but it really turned out to be a truck parking issue. And that issue with a change in the parking ordinance has been sent to the APC for some changes. There were some, you know...
Well, I don't think that it was completely solved. And I think it kind of came up at the APC in a whole nother discussion. I forget what we were talking about. But the issue is, is this particular house, and now I know of one other one, is we have... We don't have short-term rentals. We only have long-term, 30-day rentals. So what is happening is there's a lot of facilities being built. There's an Amazon facility being built in New Carlyle. There's the railroads being worked on and some other things. So one person is signing a lease at a house and opening it up as a bunkhouse to all the workers. So this particular house has between five and 10 different people there all day, all night, all the work trucks. Maybe five or 10 is probably too many. But so it's... I think we need to tighten up somehow, or talk about tightening up, the ordinance or how we do the long-term rentals because that is defeating the purpose. I'm actually involved in a different rental and people came straight out and said they're looking for a bedroom, a house that can be several units for several different people. And if not, did I know of any other houses close together? Because they have groups of people. So they're kind of skirting around the issue and making it, you know, one person might say, I would sign the lease, but then I would say, Shannon, give me 100 bucks. I can sleep there tonight, JD, you can sleep there Tuesday, and I can sleep there Friday. And then there's multiple people coming in and out. And so I think we definitely need to address that, especially with just everything happening, with so much development going on in Michigan City and the double track and whatnot. And I mean, if we have the... We're fortunate enough to be grandfathered in that we don't have short-term rentals. But people getting around this is defeating the purpose. You know, everybody, I think, needs to know who their neighbors are or who's coming there at night. Not one person signing the lease and then multiple different people sleeping there whenever they want.
Kendra, if I may interject, is it's not uncommon within residential leases to list all of the other people that would be able to be there with gender lease. In addition, is that within real estate law, we won't... In all of long-term residential status, it's familiar status. You can only have more... Cannot have more than two people per bedroom, right? So and we all know how many bedrooms are in a house. We can work that up. Is that if we required the lease to be on file with the names of the people who are to be there, Shannon, B, whatever, is that anybody excluding that should... A complaint come in, is that that should be applicable fine if somebody is staying time there and is not on the lease?
Yeah, because I think we can do that. I mean, I think we can be as restrictive as we want with our code and our ordinance. And I know Dune Beach does that. I mean, if you rent your house, you have to get set your lease to the Dune Beach Board for approval. I mean, that's different. It's a homeowner association, so that's different. But I don't... I think that we still can be more... We can be restrictive with leases for short-term rentals unless people list the names of people who be staying there.
Yeah, our leases have to be filed, correct, here?
Do they have to be filed?
Yes, yes.
Okay, how do you find that?
It's funny, because if we just made the correction is anybody who's going to be in the house at this time has to be listed.
Right.
Would that be at least one step?
I would think so.
I think that would be a good first step.
And I don't... Hopefully, it's not going to happen, you know, a lot, but it is happening in this one street and it's pretty obvious. And then I was contacted. I'm involved in a different helping on a different rental property, actually, in Dune Beach and was specifically told that I had two separate groups of people looking and they were both from building an Amazon facility in New Carlyle, both looking, willing to pay pretty much anything because they're splitting it amongst, you know, a bunch of different people. So I just think we definitely should look into tightening that up, so...
But again, number of bedrooms, number of bedrooms that we could easily look up unbaked, all familiar status times two, is that that's the amount of people can be there in this home.
Mm-hmm.
And those people then would have to be on the lease for this period of time. Perhaps makes it a little bit more difficult for people to want to turn it into a bunkhouse.
Right. So how do we proceed with that? Does it have to go to the APC then? Because that's not zoning. So does... Can I just work with you offline to tighten up how a lease...
You can. Any ordinance to change that, just help me with that. You just have to make sure that it reconciled with the state code because we want to make sure that we don't interfere with the Long Beaches or if it's being grandfathered. So we just have to make sure those reconciled, which we'll do as part of the review process.
Kendra, there's maybe still a question more just from my office that I just thought of. Is the homeowner a laborer when they sign this?
Yeah. And unfortunately, homeowners loving it because they're getting a lot of money. And it's being... It's been... Because it's happening, the crew that's staying there is not... They're just... I forget what... Doesn't matter. But so it's been very advantageous for the homeowner because it's been filled in the off-season nightly. Multiple people coming and going and trucks are coming all night and leaving, so...
The landlord's also got to sign a lease. That landlord should also be fined if someone's also in there, right? They have to take responsibility for leasing out who's going to be there. It's make it defined on both sides, the person and the landlord.
Yeah, that's a good point.
At this... I believe the landlord, I'm going to be a little more careful who I'm leasing to.
Right.
And if there's any concerns, maybe not.
Right, that's a good point to have the fine on both sides because otherwise you'll get a, well, it's not going to be my problem. The landlord's going to get fined. I'm going to do it anyway, so, you know.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good point. It just seems to me that if they're workers, and I agree that we can tighten it up and I love your idea, JD, that, you know, as many bedrooms as two people. But it seems to me that if they're working, and I go back to when we rented our house years and years ago to Jamar Ruby people and, you know, it wasn't monthly, it was yearly. They would come in Sunday night or Monday. They'd go to work all week and they'd leave Friday. So if people are working, I don't see that they're coming and going, but I'm not witnessing the house. But, you know, I guess there's an easy way to leave behind the hyperbole or the, you know, the five to 10 trucks or however many trucks. But I also think if people are working and they're paying the rent, I mean, I know how many people rent our house, but, you know, I didn't raise the rent because I had four people staying there. It was just what the rent was. And, you know, it goes back to living in Evanston where we... There was an ordinance for a long time where people that weren't related by marriage or blood, they were considered communes. And I mean, we got rid of that ordinance like in 2012 or something. So, you know, if people are renting their houses, you know, again, I like the idea of tightening it up a little, but I'm not sure how much we can restrict it. I'd probably rather have people going to work five days a week than I'd rather have the 24-hour every week house changing.
Let me... I was just going to clarify. I don't think the point... It doesn't matter what they're doing, even if they rent it and they stay inside for 30 days and they don't come out. They're having... It's still a... Well, I guess the term bunkhouse is coming and going, but these people are coming and going all night. They're working midnight shift. So at 3:00 in the morning, two and three cars pull up and then some leave at 6:00 AM. It's a constant flow. So it's very relevant to this point. That was my whole point. It's a bunkhouse for these people working on the railroad. Different people coming in and out every week, every night, all hours of the night. And sometimes during the day, the house is all closed up and all night, it's flurry of activity because they're getting in at 1:00 and 2:00 o'clock in the morning and all the lights go on and the trucks pull in and the house turns on and the neighbor, you know, it's... So it's definitely an issue.
Have there been police calls on it, Chief? Or, I mean, are you aware of helping the neighbors or people?
I am aware of the one particular one. I spoke to the owner of the residence. He actually had actually talked to the main renter as well and getting one of the trucks removed and that, so... But yeah, they were very cooperative with me when I reached out to them.
And I would, again, go back to refer this to council. Is my understanding of state law is familiar status versus non-familiar status. The amount of people that are legally in a house is defined by how many bedrooms are in a house. And that would be a piece of just of understanding a little bit more so that that puts a cap on things. And if their name has to be on the lease and someone's sleeping there who's not on the lease, things don't reconcile.
Yeah, I like that idea. Any more discussion? Okay, Kendra, you're going to work on one a little bit? Yeah, I will. Healy landscaping estimate, plant three maple trees north of the public safety building.
During the initial discussions in the construction of the public safety building, a previous council group part of these discussions had met with the surrounding homeowners around the public safety building. That being two specific homeowners immediately to the north of the public safety building. And upon those discussions, it was brought up about providing some coverage, some landscaping for aesthetics around the public safety building to kind of offset the back of the metal structure of the building. We've received a quote from two different vendors specifically for the placement of three maple trees that would be going on the northeastern section just north of the building, adjacent property owner. For... First quote was for $1,445. The second quote was for $1,907.51. Cheaper, the two quotes were for Dan Healy here in landscaping. The homeowners have agreed to this as well and is recommendation that we move forward with placing this landscaping there to keep our surrounding neighbors happy. Additionally, there will be some additional work done. Another adjacent property owner has received some quotes and some design on that one. However, we have not come to specific terms on that, so I may have to return to the council in the future with that one. However, we are working on a possible donation of some evaporations that will be removed from stop 29. Those potentially could be used for this landscaping project. And then the cost of the river rock, I spoke into members of the fire administration and possibly the fire administration will help offset the cost of the second project for this. So the one that we have before you tonight is for the maple trees for $1,445.
The tree rating system. We have a certain amount of maples that are considered nuisance. I'm sorry. Some of the maple... Some of the maple trees are considered nuisance trees when they're in the ordinance and there are some that aren't. And the reason I bring it up is, and then I think you would like to know this, is that maples have very shallow root system. And if you can... Any of you are in the city of Chicago, know the buckling sidewalks. That's what would happen over time. And so we might want to make... We could make sure, tell Dan what kind of trees would be the best that have the deepest roots because there's some that are. But that's... The city of Chicago doesn't even put maples in.
Looks like it's red, it's red maples.
Okay, so let me look it up for him so I make sure. Because I know it'd be fine now, but 20... You know, 15 years down the road, you don't want all that beautiful cement racking.
But it's far enough away from the building. I know Kenita was there for one of the meetings as well. It's a significant distance from the building.
All right, let me take a look at the ordinance. I know we have some of them that are... We have from the state of Indiana. Thank you, thank you, lovely.
Thank you. Is this funding coming out of the per-tree fund? Or does it come out of the public safety building fund?
I mean, Meg and I have briefly discussed this morning. Meg was gonna look at some of the accounts, but Joy brings up a good point. We have significant funds in the tree fund that could cover this purchase, so I'll defer to Meg on that.
Okay.
And I would have to look.
Okay. Thank you. I would move to approve as long as Meg finds the right spot to take the money from.
I would second the motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Posits and associates invoice number 2024361-02 for 2024-2 CCMG grant application for $400. I would move to approve. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Woodruff and Sons invoice number 81058, Stop 17 and 18 Drainage Project, $262,847 for payment approval.
Madam President, I would just add that this is the first invoice of two, the Stop 17, 18 Stormwater Project. The funds to cover this expenditure will be coming from the Stormwater revenue accounts.
We would make a motion to approve. We have a second for discussions?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any council comments? Claims approval, Meg?
No extra motion to approve.
I'll take that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. What's that? All in favor, say aye.
You guys have something?
Aye.
We have public comments?
Public comments.
Sure.
Take a seat, guys.
Sure.
So my name is Mark Macholi.
Can you come up to the microphone?
My name is Mark Macholi. I live at 2937 Ridge Road, and I thought I'd offer a little feedback. Most of the time, I'm sure it's probably negative, but this is a positive one in the craziest sense. But anyways, three weeks ago, my wife had a injury where she was basically for the lone pair, wife and the waist down. And so we called 911 to call. Well, beach volunteer guy showed up, I think there were seven. They did a great job. They, for that service, I thought I'd like to hear from a happy customer.
Absolutely.
Because guys don't have to spend money. Thank you.
How's your wife doing?
Thank you very much.
Great. There's some kind of either arthritic thing or a pinched nerve. I mean, she was in France for like two days, but she's great now.
Glad she's doing good.
She'll paint a garage for mom.
You're up on the ladder, right?
Yeah, right.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Are we done?
Yes, I think we're done.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.